Good afternoon, everybody. Welcome to Swanee County Board of County Commissioner meeting for January 7th, 2023. At this time, I'd like to get Commissioner Perkins to do the invocation and the pledge. Thank you. Everybody stand, please.
Let us pray. God our Father in heaven, we come now and dear Father, thank you for your blessing and thank you for our well-being. This night, oh God, our lives are similar ourselves together in this commission meeting, God, we pray that you look upon every commissioner, God, continue to give us the wisdom and knowledge of God to lead our district and this community that hold their God. We pray, God, for our first responders, our sheriff, our each department, dear God, we pray for them, dear God, that you can be blessed, oh God, in Christ, we pray that you bless, oh God, with the knowledge to get the fund that we need, dear God, that you bless our lobbyists, dear God, that you will bless them with the right language to approach the government, dear God, that we shall receive those offerings, those funds we need. And God, we pray protection over this district, over this county, over everyone, dear God, in Christ, we pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God, in the justice of liberty and of justice.
Moving on to item number one, approval of the minutes for the January 3rd, 2023 regular board meeting. Is there any discussion? Do I have a motion to approve?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Perkins.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Landall, in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries unanimously. Moving on to the consent agenda, I have number five and number six pulled. Is there any others? So we'll start items two through four and seven through nine. Is there any discussion or I have a motion to approve?
Move to approve items two through four and seven through nine.
Motion by Commissioner Land.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Perkins, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Item number five, approval and authorization to execute employment agreement with county administrator, Mr. Mobley.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To address the contract presented by Mr. Scott, and I appreciate everything he's done for stepping up and being here for us, you know? And, but what I would like to see in that contract is a one-year term or a contract since he's already in the drop program. Then I would also like to see some verbiage related to the address and to address first the... That first conversation that we had, I didn't see it in there where he was going to be remain as a regular employee in regards to accumulated sick and leave time and not the unlimited as Harris had. And verbiage too, on the topic of when we fill either position throughout, you know, his term. I don't see in there where we had talked about the other night where he agreed to go back to where he was or downscale a little bit to compensate for the other employment of a public works director. And, um... Another one was on the 5B. This document contains entire agreement between the parties concerning the employment of Scott and supersedes any prior agreements. I was trying to get clarity on that.
That's just legalese, Mr... That's just legalese stuff you always say, isn't it?
Yeah, but when we had originally talked, we had talked that he would stay with the as a county, regular county employee, referring back to a sick and annual time area wherever he had built up. But I didn't see it in the contract that was here. And, um, but moving forward, we do need to have a standard contract for this position. I feel it needs to be scaled down with respect to the severance pay and termination process and the payout. I want to do this to protect our county from paying the scale that we had just come or encountered with Mr. Harris. I understand the importance for the contract in order for the county to attract a qualified applicant. It just needs to be scaled back so we can, we're not penalizing ourselves. So I would like to table it till we come up with a different contract for a year. I mean, because he's already in the drop anyway. Instead of the, you know, having all the 20 weeks pay and everything in there at this point, you know?
Where are you reading out on the leave?
On, uh... Termination severance pay. 3A. I just don't want to get us caught up in the same situation where we just was. And that's not coming at you in any way, shape or form, but...
No worries.
I feel like the county kind of needs to protect itself.
Absolutely. So if I'm correct in hearing what you're saying, you won't... You don't want to do the 20 weeks?
I don't think we should do the 20 weeks. And additional equivalent with all the pension and all that on there as well. So we could scale it down since he's already in the drop anyway. And we're going to be looking for somebody for either position at some point. So we can come up with a year contract to December of the upcoming year, this year.
So I'm trying to get, figure out where you're going on the leave. Are you talking about leave that he's already acquired or are you talking...
Yeah, remember when we first talked about it? He had leave with the county and you don't get to carry all that forward and get paid out for all that, but as administrator, you would if you carried that forward as if like Harris did.
Well, I think we already...
There's a limit, though, that's established in the personnel procedures.
Yep.
And he would still be able to carry that limit up to that.
Just that limit, not unlimited.
That's the limit.
I'm not seeing it in this, and I may be wrong. I'm just, I just want to bring things forward and be kind of open about it.
Sure.
So that's, I was just kind of trying to address it.
What we were addressing is they would provide all the benefits, you know, that are recognized here, not anything any different than what we have for senior management under, it's under 4B.
But he's being, as far as the leave, the accumulation of leave and the amount of leave is as a regular employee, is that correct?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Perkins?
Go ahead.
Go ahead, Leo, let me finish. I mean, Commissioner Mobley.
Go ahead, Mr. Perkins.
I just want to make a statement to what Mr. Mobley was saying. Here is, uh, Mr. Harris, and it's kind of, no reference to Mr. Scott either. He didn't want to be in the same boat either. And as Commissioner Land, I would say, we don't want to be a good student of the county's money. Mr. Harris was getting like, was getting 141,103.70 cents for his annual pay. And I know we're doing it 140 for Mr. Scott. But if you look at the numbers here, which includes annual payout of $44,690.14, and the sick pay was, uh, $3,129.47 for 775 hours and 0.16. Severance is $54,830 for 20 weeks. With his regular earnings, 134,184.70. And you were told that together would be 286,836.31. So, and I guess we're staying in that, we want to get in that same boat. We are having to pay out this kind of money. And, you know, we got Mr. Harris. Yes, sir. He would be paying this, this amount to him.
Just for clarification on those particular numbers, as I understand, Mr. Gentry came up with those things as what the actual had been accumulated for Mr. Harris over the period of time. And those numbers reflect those accumulations, you know, under his contract.
His contract.
Right, right.
That is not what's going to...
Thank you. It's not what's going to be accumulated, you know, under this. Mr. Harris, Mr. Scott, you know, has, has his accumulation so far and, you know, he's not going to lose that accumulation, but he's also not going to have an exception in those accumulations like Mr. Harris had. He's going to be treated like a regular employee, I mean, under our standard personnel policies.
Yeah. That's the way I understood it.
Wouldn't have written in redacted, then, though?
Okay, that should have been...
But what about when we do find someone?
If you'll look...
At that point?
Yes, sir. If you'll look, if you'll look at provision under 4A, 4A on third page, the base annual salary is $140,000 and represents compensation for serving in the dual capacities of county administrator and public works. Should he cease to serve in that dual capacity, then to his, you know, in the dual capacity, whether by choice or by board directive, parties agree that the base compensation under this agreement may be adjusted by mutual agreement without effect on the remaining provisions of the agreement. So what we had talked about at that time was, okay, when we got to somebody, got somebody, whatever that may be, Mr. Scott said, okay, we've come back and then we renegotiate only, you know, the, the compensation part because the benefit parts that he would be getting are basically, you know, the same standard things for all other employees anyway.
So my question to you, Mr. Scott, is you, are you okay with a one-year term contract?
Yes, because I'll probably hear less than that.
But I understand where Mr. Mobley's coming from is...
I think, I think it states as a one-year term from December to December 23.
So that negates the 20-week payout anyway, so...
Right. That would be only if, if, you know...
If we just terminated you between now and then.
Right, right.
I just feel like we are penalizing ourselves with the contract that Harris had. At any point, we want to get rid of him without cause. It don't matter. It just says he'd be willing and able to still do the job, which he was willing and able. But I mean, it's felt like a lot of people want to go in a different direction and at that point, it costs us a lot of money just to, to change over, you know? I just feel like we need to have a contract that kind of benefits the county in some way, but then again, you need one that's going to attract a good applicant to come here when Mr. Scott retires.
Yes, sir. Let me just, let me refer you to, um, it's actually Florida statutes 215, 425. And what it says is, you know, when, back then, they were giving more bonuses and stuff for people when they were ending their employment or did a good job and they were paying bonuses, yada, yada. So what they say is on or after July 1 of 2011, if unit of government that enters into a contract or an employment agreement or renewal of, of an existing agreement can't have, must include the following provision in the contract. A requirement that severance pay provided may not exceed an amount greater than 20 weeks of compensation. Okay? That was the standard on the high end that's permissible, you know, by statute. Y'all can adjust that to whatever we can agree to, but you can't go past the 20, 20, 20 weeks.
Can we work on, I mean, can we come up with like a workshop to work on a contract or?
Well, I think we can settle it right now.
Yeah, I'm not sure. I mean, Mr. Pravat took what we had said or we agreed upon and put in, in legal format. Everything's the same, the way I read it, as it was before, and it's not the same as Mr. Harris's contract.
Yeah.
So, you know, I'd be glad to discuss it further if you'd like, but, um, you know, it's less, I mean, I've already, I won't get all my sick time anyway, whenever, whenever I leave. But it'd be like 400, 400 hours or so of annual time is all I would get in the payout. So it would be the 200 of that Mr. Perkins mentioned, but that might have been another contract, but...
He was reading from Harris's.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, um, I, I understand what Commissioner Mobley's saying and, and the, I would add this, I would add that the 20 weeks pay, I'm okay with that. I don't like paying that, but when you get to this level, I feel like of pay to attract any other applicants with this fire at, at will without calls at any given time, I mean, you're wanting folks to move, here's how I see it, you're, you're asking, you want a good, you want a good applicant, you want them to move into your community, you want them to put roots here. Well, I'm going to be hesitant, if that guy's me, to go buy a $200,000 house and make a financial obligation in this community, knowing that my employer could fire me at will at any given time without any type of severance pay. So I sign up for that and the dynamics on the board change, they want to shift gears. I'm terminated tomorrow, I get nothing, I still got a mortgage payment and I still got a house in Swanee County. You know, the 20 weeks allows them to, doesn't push them into financial suicide, allows them time to replace what would be a fairly high income paying job for a rural community, you know, kind of keep, keep their, their livelihood together. So, I mean, you know, it's not nothing personal, so you don't want to train wreck, train wreck them. And then on the, on the, you know, as Mr. Pravat explained, Mr. Scott's agreeing to, you know, it says there on item number one, if the duties of public works director, we hire one at, at, at his choice or ours, he's, is willing to renegotiate his salary. Now, we don't talk about the number, but...
That's why I was trying to get to a number to where we got it on kind of paper of some sort.
Well, I think that the, the number is going to be between where he came from and where he's at now. So somewhere in the middle, he's not going to go below what he, what he was making, or at least I wouldn't. And then on the, um, I do agree with you on the 12-month contract. I mean, if, I hadn't thought about that before, but in this case, it doesn't really hurt anybody, but if it was a different applicant, you got, you, you, every 12 months, you could look at redoing it, or you could do 24-month contracts. So if you did have to, if you did want to get out of the situation, you're like, well, we got six months and the contract ends, you could suffer through without paying the 20 weeks.
Can I make a suggestion? How about after a certain amount of time, he can acquire that 20 weeks, after like a year or two years or whatever? Then you, then you qualify for the 20 weeks.
Well, y'all, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind, I think we're talking about, I would like for us to talk about it two different ways. If we're just talking about Mr. Scott's...
Contract.
Which is what we have before us, because it says in there, we need to do that and let's just worry about that. If we're talking about something like Mr. Mobley's talking about is hiring someone for the future.
Yes.
Then maybe we do need to have a workshop on that and let's all really hash out who and how and what limits we want to set for hiring a new county administrator. You know what I mean?
Right.
But I think we need to just hash this one out and hold his feet to the fire for a year.
How about let's just do after one year on Mr. Scott's and then we'll have a workshop on...
When's your drop? It's 14 months or...
Probably like September, October.
You see what I'm saying?
Unless we can...
Unless I can get out of the type drop I'm into.
So let's just do it, we'll do the year.
Do the year and then, can we do that, Mr. Pravat? After one year, he qualifies for 20 weeks.
Okay. What I'd like to do then, what I'd like to do then is let's put a provision in there, it'd be the year, but 60 days prior to the end of the year, so it'll make us, make us look at it. So we put it in there, you know, for him to, for it to be renewed, we have to agree on that 60 days ahead of time. Okay?
I'd be good with that.
Okay? That way it'll force us to look at it, you know, at that September, October, October range.
That works.
But on any, well, we'll, we'll have another talk on a, if it's somebody beside Mr. Scott at some point of redoing this, this contract to make it different.
Yes, sir. And it is, and it is, Mr. Mobley, it is not the same agreement that Mr. Harris had before.
I know that. Yeah, he never set roots here after 12 years. He had no, no house.
So, Mr. Pravat, you got the change then or what?
I've got the, I've got the one change that I'm directed to, that'll be for the one year and then I'll do the 60-day thing.
Mr. Scott, you good with that?
Are you seeing anything else in here that I've misunderstood or...
Well, the rest of it is kind of like I thought it was going to be. It was, he was to be treated as an employee on carryover of sick and annual pay, just like anybody else and...
Yes, sir.
His salary is set at what we discussed. And now we put in a provision for a one-year, one-year for the 20-week severance. And was that it, Mr. Mobley, or was there anything else? So I think we're pretty, pretty well, we all in agreement?
So we got to publicly comment, but before we get to that, is this something y'all are wanting to approve tonight with the contingent on Mr. Pravat making change X, Y?
Yeah. And then later on, before we hire another one, we'll relook at this again.
Redo it.
And redo it.
Mr. Scott, you all for that?
Sure.
Name and address for the record.
Moses Slerford, 1458102, Pat. The public didn't get a copy of the contract, so bits and pieces I'm picking up, couple concerns that I got, some of the language, I just heard in 4A that the term may be adjusted. There's no requirement by, by the employee, by mutual agreement. In my understanding, mutual agreement, there's nothing that requires the employee to agree. And it also said, without effect on the remaining provisions, that doesn't include prior provision or, um, parts of the contract. So 3A and 3B is not affected by 4A. And so if you go back, according to this contract, which says in 5B that this contract supersedes any prior agreements, my understanding is that if you reduce Mr. Scott's pay at any amount, then he's entitled to that 20-week severance.
I think that's what, Mr. Chairman, that's what we just changed is making it after 12 months. He, he wouldn't get any severance until after 12 months of employment. He wouldn't qualify for any severance until after 12 months is what we just amended.
Okay, but I, I still don't know why that language needs to be in there. I heard Mr. Hale, Commissioner Hale, saying that, uh, let's deal with this one and do future ones, maybe even a workshop. I'd love to see y'all do a workshop and get a contract that's beneficial to whoever's sitting there, but definitely I'd hate to see us get in the situation we just went through too. And I think y'all are setting precedence, even if this is a one-year or remainder of his year, y'all still, it's on record, it's, it's, the, the future applicants could review all the prior contracts. You know, I don't know about y'all, but I look at prior stuff and just wow, all of a sudden, this guy gets this, this guy gets this and I'm not, you know? Mr. Land's concern about potential applicants looking at their security, well, all of a sudden, they're tightening up. I just think the time could be now to limit that. And again, it doesn't matter what anybody says, 5B, if y'all change it to a month, 12 month or December 20th or whatever, that probably isolates us or protects us there. But it does state plainly at the end of the 5B, I guess that's towards the end, supersedes any prior agreements. So nothing that's been said, yes, sir?
No, I was just going to comment that that's, you're headed right in the right direction, that nothing that's been said prior to execution of this is, is part of the agreement. It's only going to be what's on the paper. That's what that clause means.
And with, with 3A and 3B remained and, and the way 4A is, is worded, I think that's, that's a trap, a potential trap. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Land?
I'm just going to read 4A for, I don't know who has a copy of this and who does not, but under 4A, um, the, how many of y'all in the public got this? Nobody? Well, under 4A, it says base compensation. The annual base salary is 140,000 and represents compensation for serving in the dual capacities of county administrator and director of public works director. Should Scott cease to serve in, in said dual capacity, whether by choice or by board directive, the parties agree that the base compensation under this agreement may be adjusted by mutual agreement without effect on the remaining provisions of the agreement. All salary payments shall be, shall be payable in installments at the same time and manner as other county employees. The employer may increase said salary of administrator to such extent as employer may in its sole discretion deemed desirable based on the performance of the administrator. However, nothing in this section shall require the employer to increase the salary of administrator at any particular time, including periodic budgetary increases to county employees. So I understand, Mr. Clippers, and I, that's a question that I would have for Mr. Pravat, under the mutual agreement part, I guess if the administrator, currently Mr. Scott, says, no, I will not adjust my salary to 125,000, then that wouldn't be mutual. So where do you go from there?
Then you terminate him.
I would be unemployed.
You would terminate, you would terminate him under the, the other provision.
We both have to agree or somebody's got to walk.
I knew the answer, I just wanted you to say it.
Okay.
If you would have the 20-weeks thing in there.
You got to pay that.
So are we good with...
I will just state, I'll just state that the 20 weeks is pretty standard all the way around the state for this level of position. I mean, and what I hope that you're not trying to do tonight is to, to come up with a, a box where you, you know, you have this, and then when we get a new person, it just says you fill in the name on here. Because it shouldn't, it shouldn't be that way because there'd be other things that happen. Typically in these things, Mr. Scott happens to be a resident of Swanee County, but if we happen to find somebody that say was from Orlando or something, you know, he needed time to move up here with his family, you know, we pay his moving costs, you know, to get him up here if he was a good guy.
Or her.
There's other things that, you know, that are out there, you know, to be considered and you need to have room for whoever that next individual is, you know, to, to give them something so there, there can be a give and take in there. So I hope that we're not, you know, getting down to just doing this for everybody, you know, moving forward, but it's just kind of a basis of where we want to go, a guideline. I'm okay with that.
So with Mr. Scott's agreement, are we all on board? Mr. Scott, Mr. Pravat, with the changes?
As I understand, yes, sir, I mean, I'm okay.
Okay. Is the board, do I need a motion for that?
Yes, sir. I mean, you could, you could approve the agreement with me making the changes with regard to the 60, the 60-day period, you know, there and the one year before he's eligible for the 20-week severance.
And so you would bring that back at the next meeting for us to approve?
I would, I can do that, yes, sir.
So can I get a motion for that?
Well, if we motion, if we...
The motion's not to approve anything, if that's what you want to do. If you wanted to approve it with me making those corrections, you can make the motion to approve that.
I would rather, or I'm just speaking for me, but I would rather you make the changes and bring it back so we can see it.
Agree with that.
Consensus?
So it's just a consensus?
Yes, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Item number six, approval to place physical year 2021, 22 excess revenues returned to the board from constitutional officers into contingency. Commissioner Land?
Yes, sir. I just wanted to be, to be clear and make sure that we all are agreeing as a board that any of the surpluses turned in from all the other constitutional officers, we're going to put back in contingency, right? No matter what the dollar figures?
That's correct.
Okay.
Or that's the way I understand it.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear. I'm good with, I'm good with that.
So with that, do I have a motion to approve item number six?
So move.
Motion by Commissioner Land?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Hale, all in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Moving on to Commissioner items, anybody got anything?
No, sir.
No, sir.
I think this is a, maybe a good time for Mr.
Can we speak on it like, I don't know, maybe I'm speaking too quick or out of turn, but is there any way we could maybe possibly talk about putting something on the agenda as far as the change order go as far as getting approved by the commission? Oh, well.
Which, which one?
Like, so right now, we, we really, it comes to, to us on the consent to approve paying it, but we never really got a chance to, to approve that job getting done. We, I'd like to see where we can maybe, anything over $1,500 that needs to come before the board, for the board approval. If we could get that on the agenda.
I think what he's, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, I think what he's asking is he's wanting to put an item on the agenda to limit the amount of change orders to $1,500 for, I guess I'm assuming just the administrator to approve. After that, it must come to the board for an okay.
Only concern.
Am I right, Mr. Mobley, in that statement?
Yes.
Is that what you was asking?
Only concern I would have, if you're in the middle of a project, sometimes that two or three-week delay would be, would be very detrimental for that project. Moving forward, you know, our procedure has changed on change orders. There were some change orders we talked about today that were approved by prior administration. And our new technique is the inspector, our inspector will approve it, the engineer will improve it, and then I will improve it. So it's going through the channel to make sure that makes, makes logical sense that we're going to do that change. We can certainly talk about, you know, obviously talk about things, but I would, that number would scare me to know that we got a project, we gotta get done, you know, utility project or whatever, a road project, whatever, and then we gotta stop and wait three weeks to, you know, you got mobilization, you got other issues. I think we, we would hurt ourselves sometimes.
Yeah, I understand. I just feel like, you know, like some processes don't fit the job.
Right.
As I just looked back here a while back, you know, just.
Well, can I make a suggestion? What's the limit now for, for the administrator to sign off on without board approval?
$15,000, I believe.
So, I understand you got your process in place for the three, but if it, say it goes over $10,000, you'd have to get the chairman's signature on it too.
That'd work. We just, you know, we just gotta make sure the projects are able to flow.
Yeah, well, I would think that would give you enough leeway. And then if you had to get me, we could get it the rest of the way. And then after that's board approval anyways.
And, you know.
Sue chief.
I need, I need to get.
Just another set of eyes. Without having to wait a whole two, what I'm trying to, is like Mr. Scott said, trying to get away from that two or possibly three-week delay of a contractor not getting something done if it's something that was really necessary.
Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Hale?
I don't disagree, but I would say, couldn't, because those projects come to us to discuss and to vote on. And some may be, a total project may be $5,000. So at that point in time, we could set it at 1,500. But if it's a 50,000 or a $500,000 project, then maybe we do the $10,000, you know, something like that. Couldn't we do it per project instead of just having a blanket that covers everything?
Please, excuse me, please don't do that.
No?
No, sir, please don't do that.
Well, it sounds like there wanted a little more control and rightly so over.
If I, if I might, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Pravat?
Thank you. The, you know, the, the way you handle that is, is set those limits like we have in our purchasing policy now, you know, of the $15,000. You know, if they're coming in, I think maybe what you want to do is take some time, get with Mr. Scott to get the process, you know, right for all of that. If you get to where that you are each involved, you know, looking at each of the individual projects lower and at that lower level like that, you're getting into the day-to-day operation of the contractor and, and the county business things. I think you're, you're taking yourself back out of the county administrator's system the way that it is, you know, set up. And you may be trying to involve yourselves too much in the day-to-day, which is contrary to what the system that we have right now. So, keeping a level there, but maybe getting with him to tweak on the process of how it gets approved up to this level. You know, on certain, certain requirements, you know, we have for certain types of purchasing, you gotta have so many bids, so many whatevers. Certain types of change orders, you know, on the larger projects, they all have to come back to you, you know, anyway. But I think what happened and what everybody's got a little burr about is that this particular change order is coming back after the fact rather than beforehand. You know, if you, you know, if this had been, and I don't even remember what it was, $4,000, $5,000, whatever the heck it was, you know, but if we'd had that ahead of time, we could have discussed it and say it, said then, well, I don't think that this type of work is worth $5,000. But I think what happened was this one was done and we're having to, you know, redo it after the fact. So, I would just, you know, don't get your limits too low so that you get things where it's, you know, slugging along, but try to keep them up there so, and, and so that you still will approve them ahead of time, you know, as you move forward. I think that's just, like I said, I think just kind of a burr there on that one because it was an after-the-fact thing rather than a before-the-fact.
Well, and we're, and we're going to have quite a few coming forward that are after the fact.
I was the previous administrator, but I know we ain't needing to get in on the day-to-day, you know, as far as that goes, but.
Yes, sir.
If change orders come and they are $5,000 or $10,000, they should be 2,500. We're here to save money for the county. If we're not there to look at it and y'all done approved it and they done the job for that price and it should've cost at this or, you know, I don't know, I just sometimes feel like we're missing out and losing money for the people, you know?
I wish they would've come in.
Yeah, I mean, I done found one, I done done one and I got it done for a tenth of the price.
Right.
I got it redone.
Yes, sir.
$3,000 bill, I got it done for 285.
Wayne Hancock, 11883 93rd Road. After 45 years being in construction, you realize that, that you have to have trust in the people that you hire. You hire a county manager to run your daily business. If you don't have faith in him, then he shouldn't be there. If upper management gets involved in every change order, you'll never get anything done because you're gonna delay contractors and fellow Mr. Perkins can say this better than I can, that you have to have faith in the person that you hired to do the right thing. If they don't do that, then you get rid of them. But if you all wanna get involved in running the daily business every day, good luck, folks. I was the vice president of a company, I had no limit. I signed million-dollar change orders because I had the faith that I would do the right thing and I would do the right thing for my client. So I think you have to think that same way about your county manager, that you have to have the faith in him to do the right thing. Otherwise, y'all gonna be running out there watching contractors every day and getting nothing else done. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hand.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Perkins?
I, I think that too, I think we should be wrong with the unit trying to micromanage our daily operation. I think what Mr. Scott has said by what they have put into place, those procedures to cover each step, I, I think that'd be a good step in the right direction. Then he'd have to finally, to finally say so, and I think he, he held it, the, the county at heart. And I think that he would make sure that we're being, getting the right, right service for, for the money we're getting. So we don't need to be in there micromanaging, you know, and they have no special call meeting trying to get a, you know, to approve it. I think what he's doing will be sufficient. You know, I know in time past, things have happened, but I don't think Mr. Scott did that, that way. He's, he's been here a long time and he worked on a lot of projects and been successful. I think we're just leaving this in to come up with a system.
Right.
And the end result will.
Well, I have no doubt in Mr. Scott's ability. And so, you know, it's, I don't, I think Mr. Mobley's wanting to speak, you know, for, not for just now, but for moving forward as well, even if it's not Mr. Scott. I think it's, it's, he's wanting something different there and I don't, I don't disagree. I don't wanna get down in the weeds on it, but I don't know.
You know, if you, if you set a limit and have the chairman sign off, that gives you another set of eyes, that'd be a, a step.
That would be good.
And I'm not doing that, trying to grab power. I'm just saying it's another set of eyes to look at it above that amount, you know, whether it's me or somebody else that nears chairman, you know, to do that.
I'm, I'm hoping moving forward, I know at the airport, we're clear on our contractors when we have a pre-contract meeting, that there will be no change orders, period. You know, if something happens, that's a different conversation, but, but, and you were a closed environment there at the airport, but we need to have better communication with all the way through. And no offense to anybody that's been here before or process that were done, you know, and trying to be expedient to get the projects done, I get it, but, you know, the, the inspector, the engineers have roles in the process. And we need to hold, hold them to task and hold them accountable also. But, but I, I think what we have in place now works and I'm certainly fine with having the chairman sign off also, if he was just returning a phone call sometimes, but anyway.
I try. So, Mr. Mobley, is that a good, agreeable with that?
I'm good.
What did y'all agree on? Anything over $10,000?
You don't get with the chairman.
Anything over?
Anything over 10, the chairman has to sign off.
Okay, that's all so.
And then obviously that was come back to the board for our knowledge anyway.
That's right.
Well, it'll come back to, gentlemen, it'll come back to, I mean, for y'all, for discussion as an agenda item to change the purchasing policy to reflect that. That's how it'll come back to you.
So for right now, we're just not doing anything with item number six?
Change orders aren't in the purchasing policy, is it?
Well, the amounts are.
Right.
So say that one more time, Mr. Pravat?
No, just the amounts, you know, we're, we're talking about, that's what you're looking at. A change order policy is one. A change order policy is how you do it. The amounts are controlled in the purchasing policy.
I wrote it down in this change.
But I, I would, I would have some heartburn, quite frankly, if we change the purchasing policy so that it goes from 15 to 10 on the regular purchase. Change order to me is a different conversation than a purchase.
Yes.
So.
Yeah, I would, Mr. Chairman, I would agree with that, just on the change orders, on the purchasing power. I mean, Mr. Scott's gonna need some body armor. He's been getting kicked around pretty good tonight.
Hey, other day.
But I know you don't take any offense to it. We, you know, we've, we've got some holes and some inconsistencies in our previous policy or our current policy. And I know that you understand that the board's coming from a good place and trying to maybe tighten up some of that, just, you know.
I pay taxes here too.
Being good steward of taxpayer dollars.
That's right.
That's right.
Mr. Chairman, you guys have public comment?
I'm sorry. Mr. Trancock, name and address, please.
Bo Hancock, 6135 Wiggins Road. I don't know, I'm sitting out there as a concerned citizen and I understand where Mr. Mobley's coming from. But at some point, are y'all full-time or part-time?
I feel like full-time.
That's never been answered.
I feel like full-time.
Yeah, it does. You're constantly in meetings, you're on phone calls, if you're doing your job, it's full-time. I don't think you want anything else on your plates. But we're paying him $140,000 a year. Let him do his job. If you don't like what he's doing, terminate him. You've already done it once. Come on, folks, you're all adults. And I don't wanna spend any more money than we have to. But sometimes when things happen, somebody specs a certain piece of equipment out and that piece of equipment's no longer available, you've got a substitute, you gotta come up with something. Now, are you gonna delay an entire project until they can get all of y'all together? I have, if you keep going like this, is trying to micromanage instead of overseeing and catching some of these problems, you're gonna have to have a lot of special call meetings, which is gonna take up a lot more of your time. And I, I think you're going in the wrong direction. I think you're going, leaning more to micromanaging. And, and I think you're going the wrong path if you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Trancock. Well, to be, to be fair, all we're changing right now is just anything above 10 grand, the chairman has to sign off of, anything above 15 grand has to come before the board anyway, right?
Right, this will change orders only to 10,000.
Right. So, yes, sir. Name and address.
Nice comment. Jack Shown, 7311 180th Street. You know, I think, I think there's kind of a, we may have learned a lesson before with what was going on. And the way I'm understanding it, Mr. Mobley just wants to make sure that, I'm not gonna speak for you, but I appreciate you looking out for us, you know, looking. Obviously, there's a lot of things that weren't checked by our board, our past board members. Sounds like they didn't check a lot of stuff and the fellow had carte blanche is what it sounds like to me. So, you know, I appreciate you, Mr. Mobley, bringing it up, you know, having, having our back, checking behind, you know, no offense, Mr. Scott.
No, no worries.
We've been burned, obviously. It cost us a lot of money out of our own pockets. So, you know, that, that's what I have to say about that. I appreciate you looking after. I don't know if you need to look at everything, but at least, at least somebody knows that, that you guys are reading everything and checking and doing your research. So I appreciate that much.
Thank you, Mr. Shone. Any other comments on that? At this time, was there any other Commissioner items? Anybody?
No, sir.
All good?
All good.
Good.
At this time, I'm gonna do this under Commissioner items. Mr. Norris, if you wanna come up and give us your three minutes?
Pretty sure y'all looking forward to coming up tonight.
Mr. Scott, they are paying you right now, right?
So far.
I mean, you don't have a contract, right?
We don't have, we're working, I'm, I'm working out of contract right now, yes.
All right, 'cause I'm kinda working pretty hard. We've had a lot of late meetings, weekends and stuff like that, so he's putting in the time. Thank you for what you do.
Thank you.
And this story relates to that just a little bit. You know, there's been some stuff, projects we're working on and things happening in the community and.
Some of us were over at City of Live Oak meeting the other night and we kinda got to tell, Mr. Meeks kinda got to tell a little bit of a story about some of the stuff that we're doing and, and there was a lot of questions that came to us and a lot of conversation. So, Mr. Scott and I talked about it, the chairman and I talked about it. So we thought we'd just, you know, share, kinda share with y'all a little bit what kinda goes on, on a day-to-day basis and, and when we get a project that comes in. So, these guys do a great job, they do all the work, depends on when a project comes in. This project just happens to be Bender Holt's. They're already located here. We love them to death and not just because they're sitting in the audience tonight, but, you know, we really do. And, and when, when they came online and they, they purchased that sawmill, they put a lot of money, millions and millions of dollars of investment. And this story is kind of about. this story is kind of about their latest investment. They, I think, contacted Mr. Meeks and wanted to, wanted to set up a meeting and Ron and Mac, if you guys don't mind coming up, to talk about their latest project, the log, the log line that they're putting in. For those of you guys who've been out there before, there's one log line and we have Matthew here, you might as well walk on up to Matthew. We've got, we've got one log line out there and, and he can explain that probably better than I can, but basically, the mill cuts faster than they can feed logs in. So, they're putting a secondary line in so that they can feed the mill, so they can basically make more tubefores, right? So, we knew this project was coming, so we had told them early on, I know the chairman and I met out there several times, I said, "When you get ready, reach out to us and let's see what we can do," because they've had an open-door policy ever since they came into the community. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Meeks, kinda where the story starts, each one of us has a part in it and I'd like for you guys to kinda, as well as everybody sitting out here, kinda, end the end product. We'll, we'll let Matthew speak to it, so, Mr. Meeks.
Mr. Chairman, board members, as Jimmy previously stated, kinda where we got to this point, I believe Matthew had reached out to me, wanted to request a meeting about the expansion of their log line. So, Jimmy working next door, I immediately got with him, we set up a meeting, Matthew and some of the counterparts from Freedom Industries had came in and basically laid down what, what their project entailed for this first part and this would be log line number two, building that new log line there. So, Jimmy and I have met with several businesses in the past and we've always outlined how, when it deals with an economic development project, we were gonna put, put them to the, to the front, okay? We, we were not gonna be the reason why there was a holdup on their permit and we've told countless business that this is the way we're gonna do business and we're on the cusp of being able to show that multiple times, but this one was one of our first ones. So, so they come in and, and explain to us everything that they're gonna do. They submitted their building plans and site development plans to us on a Friday, so we took that. We got some conversation involved with Jimmy and Mac and myself and we got to look into their, at the overall permitting process and what it was gonna take to get that permitted. So, one of the things that we thought we could offer them, because we don't have an abundance of things to offer them, is that we would approach the board about putting a cap on the building permit fees. This was gonna be a substantial investment project that was gonna result in maybe about a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty new jobs and our community is gonna double their production. So, we already know they're busy, but it was gonna double their production. So, this was on a Friday afternoon, so I think Jimmy reached out and got that information to the commission and got that on the agenda so that you established a cap on those building permit fees. I took site development plan approvals to my home on the weekend. Mr. Hinkle, building official, took all those drawings for the building or the, all the improvements that were gonna be done, home with him on the weekend. Monday, we were at a position where we, we could issue a permit. We had to wait till Tuesday night for the commission to vote on the cap on the permit fees, which the board did approve and Wednesday morning, they were in our office getting their permit issued. So, from Friday to Wednesday, had that permit issued. Immediately, beyond that, they were ready to start their construction. I mean, they were here, they were chomping at the bit to get ready to go. I like to think that we played a positive part in that, that we assisted them of getting from point A to point B so they can start their construction and that took a team effort. It wasn't a one individual kinda thing. We, we tried to tell you guys that we work well together and I think this project is a clear evidence of that, of how we got together, we, we had a solution for what they had going on and they were able to proceed with their project, not only just dealing with, with us at the county, but I think that Swanee Valley Electric deserves a good pat on the back with this. They got out there and had to relocate some services, coordinate with them with the locations, some new transformers, some underground conduit work that's been done out there. Swanee Valley's really been on the ball with a lot of that stuff. We didn't have any holdups with the Water Management District on any of the service water permitting out there, so good pat on the back with them. We've, we've got some good contact people through those agencies and I think everything with this project worked from top to bottom very well. And then Mac has been doing the inspections on the project and I know he has some photographs he wants to pass out to you guys and kinda show you some of the update on the progress that, that's been going on. Mac's been doing a lot of the inspections from time to time. On a good day, he'll get me out of the office and I've been on the, on the project at least two times, putting my eyes on, you know, the improvements that they have going on out there. So, it's really impressive to go out there, to look at all the work that's being done when you're out there, to seeing all these new logs that are coming in and then lumber leaving on, on trucks, you know, when, when they're going out. So, the whole total progress, you know, going on at, at one location. So, right now, I'll turn it over to Mr. Hinkle, building official, he'll go over his inspections and some of the photographs that he's got from the project.
Thank you, Mr. Meeks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you. You got it? Okay. Thank you, sir.
Mac, I'm not sure they know what they're looking at. You may have to explain it, Tom.
I do, I went and looked.
Good evening. Appreciate y'all having us here tonight. First off, kinda expand a little bit about what Jimmy and Ron was talking about with permitting process and everything. You know, we're always doing everything we can to make it more desirable to come to Swanee County, you know, bring business, bring economy, because with that commercial business also comes home building, spending money in our local economy. Pretty much doing the plan review, like Mr. Meeks said, taking those home on the weekend, I felt that was a good, you know, step in the right direction initiative to take on that so we could get this expedited. There have been many times that Ken, one of the project managers with Freedom Industries, will contact me. That is something that I will give Bender Holt, Matthew and Freedom super marks for. The lines of communication have been excellent. He'll contact me or Kelly off my staff, one of my permit texts, "Hey, we need an inspection." We get it done, it doesn't matter if that inspection is on a weekend or on a holiday. I went out yesterday and I don't mind doing that because it helps me out and it helps them out. Pretty much the first picture that's in the packet, that is one of the catch basin drains for the stormwater drainage and everything on the site and I think there was, how many, how many of those, that offhand, Matthew? Thirteen of those onsite and like I say, this is some pretty much major excavations they were doing out there. Second picture's pretty much the same thing, you can get a little bit of a better idea of a finished product and basically, like I explained to the chairman, that top part, that is essentially gonna be ground level when everything is said and done for the drains for that area.
Also, they had to build those, didn't they, Mike? Because they couldn't, they had to build those.
Yes, sir, yeah. All those are pretty much built, all the steelwork is done by hand, that's built out there by Freedom. I mean, they, I'm sure Mr. Perk, Commissioner Perkins sees it on his end as well, but when it comes to bending five-eighths rebar, I mean, these guys out here, they're really artists. I mean, I can't give them enough credit for what they do.
I think part of the problem they mentioned to us was, it's what, eight months of a wait time to get the precast? That was already done, so they had to build all that onsite because it shut the project down if they didn't.
Correct. Some of the other pictures in the packet, I think this particular pack, picture here and the next one, that is actually one of the debarker areas and it, you can just, like I say, just from the picture, a lot of times, you know, the old saying, picture doesn't do it justice, but these really do, looking at the quality of the work that's in there. Then there is a picture, actually, I got this one yesterday, the amount of underground conduit that's being gone, put in out there, if everyone can see that. And a lot of this, like Ron had spoke on and Mr. Norris, Swanee Valley providing a lot of that material, being onsite, I mean, it's just, it's amazing the kinda work you can get done when you got good cooperation all around. Few more pictures of debarker sites out there and some footer pads and I do apologize, I do not have a picture of the actual log line walls. They're putting up the forms this week. I think they're actually planning on pumping and pouring this week, but, I mean, I will have to say, overall, inspection-wise, permitting, dealing with Freedom, dealing with Matthew and Bender Holt, they make my job easy. It's just been a pleasure and we try and reciprocate that with them and it's been fantastic. One last thing, though, chairman has been out, Mr. Scott's been out, any of the rest of the commissioners, if you have interest, if you would like to go out to the site, get up with me, Bender Holt's has been very accommodating, I'd love to take y'all out there and let y'all get a firsthand look.
Thank you.
I got a tour of ones.
Well, it's pretty impressive, I mean, in just, what, a couple of weeks, they've been out there?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I went out there and I was like, wow, they done got that much already in place in a couple of weeks, so it's pretty impressive.
Yes, sir, they're hard workers.
What they done.
I'll turn it over to Mr. Murphy now.
If anybody in the public, you'd like to get my pictures, if you wanna look at them, you can.
One, one thing that we, we wanna drive home, these guys don't always wanna work weekends and holidays, but they get a lot of encouragement from my office and so, nah, they, they're a hundred percent team effort, but they were on a hard deadline. This equipment, and I'll, I'll ask Matthew to speak to that, there's eighty semi-containers of, of equipment, eighty-six, I think they told us, and it's coming on like April third or so, there's a hard date, so this project was very, very, very time-sensitive. So, that was the urgency and we didn't wanna be the guys that held that up, so, and this is Matthew Murphy, he is in charge of the project out there at Bender Holt's and so we asked him to come show, you know, some love to you guys, but, you know, tell how the project went, appreciative of what you guys have done.
You're pretty good at authorizing overtime. You got this guy here, you got...
How many of you is yours? Can y'all go pay your taxes?
I'm not. You're covered.
Matthew, name and address, please.
Yes, Matthew Murphy, one seven one nine two forty-six terrace.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen, for being here, thank you for having me. I don't know what else is really left to say, but I did, I was sitting here eight months ago with an enormous project in front of me. We had a lumber mill that was withering away, didn't meet safety standards and it didn't have the production that its counterparts did. They sent me here initially, I, I made a meeting with Ron, Mac, Jimmy, I was very pleased at what I got. In most towns that I go to and we start a project, the county starts as our adversary and here, they started as our biggest ally. They were our, our biggest support group, they wanted to make sure that we had everything we need to implement what we needed. Now, when they talk about the footings and the foundations and the embedded plates that are going in the ground right now, that is for the equipment to attach to and what we'll be doing is we have an existing log line and it merchandises the logs, it strips them down and categorizes them based on size, girth and different qualities, but what we're doing is we're adding a second log line and that will allow us to double our production. It'll also add a third shift, it'll also add numerous jobs to our scheduling, production, sales, everything across the board and, you know, Jimmy had mentioned that you guys had a meeting and discussed capping our fees. I will tell you, as soon as that verdict came down and, and I distributed that information to management there, I got the green light on four more projects to start. So, what we're doing right now is I just, we just processed a contract for one point three million dollars to bring the fire suppression up to code and we didn't need to do that. Our insurance provider did not require that, we did that as a preemptive strike. We're looking to save lives, not hurt them, you know? So, we've got the fire suppression coming in, we've also got safety railing going around all the tops of all the buildings so they can access the equipment and clean it properly. Now, with Jimmy and them allowing us to get a cap on that and being so, you know, accommodating to our needs, we, we're actually in discussion of taking the existing log line and rebuilding that as well, so it's as efficient as possible. So, they've mentioned Freedom's work, Freedom had a hundred and twenty days to complete this project. In most counties we work in, it takes half that just to get the proper paperwork in order. We're very blessed to have them on our team and we're excited to move forward. There's a lot to come. We've, I've got contractors that have come here that have already bought houses and plan to stay in this location, there, we're extending contracts for years to come, we're looking for local work, we're always looking for local work. I go to Jimmy, I'm trying to find anyone that's a specialty guy or industrial, you know, can perform at an industrial level. What we've also done is, you know, we're, we're trying to fill this community with qualified applicants. We want people that are hirable. Not only that, once they come to us, we, we teach them a trade. So, if they don't stay with us and move up, which is what we're known for, you, you can start at a lower level and become management where we're at. What we're looking for is to produce quality workers that have skills to move on to the next level, whether it's with us or with, without us. We wanna have quality workers, we wanna have trained staff, we wanna leave a footprint on this community and we're gonna keep growing. There's no limit to what we can do here. There's a lot of different things that are coming out of Europe that could potentially find their way here. There's also expansion. We, we have acres and acres surrounding our facility right now and, and sky's the limit and if these guys will help us get where we need to be, then I, I see nothing but good things in the future, but I really wanted to come here today and thank them for their time because they're spending their weekends, Mac's coming out on Sundays, you know, we have a great relation with Tim, the fire marshal, we're, we're working closely with all of these guys. I've got the, the contractors are actually, and Ron put this in place, they're gonna go ahead and sponsor the football and baseball team this year. So, we've got people that are willing to put in the work in this community and we're very excited and I was very timid coming into it on the past owner and how it was practically ran into the ground and I will tell you right now, and I walked the property today with Freedom, they're pointing at everything and they wanna bring everything up to code, everything up to where, where it should be and we're also working on traffic patterns to make ours the most requestable place for these drivers to come to drop their wood so they can get in, get out. Also, we wanna keep our quality where it's at, so we're hiring new people for quality control, we're hiring new people for shipping supervising, different things like that. So, sky's the limit with us, we just appreciate the county and everything you guys have done for us. Our next project's on, on its way, we have the mechanical side of this. Once that equipment gets delivered, it all has to be installed and put into commission, so the jobs are coming. Every person that we bring here, if we can't find qualified employees in the area, we bring them in and they're spending their money in this community and like I said, a lot of them are buying property, looking at property in the surrounding areas and they, they're actually enjoying their time here in Florida. So, we're happy, they're happy, we hope the county's happy and we just wanna keep moving forward with this kind of simpatico, you know, everybody working together for a common cause. So, I appreciate Jimmy, I appreciate Ron, appreciate Mac, they take a lot of time out. I come to their office, we sit there and talk for hours, you know, I'm a Florida boy, I've lived here my whole life and these guys welcome me with open arms and it is our plan as Bender Holt's to get more involved with the community, make more of a footprint, make more of an impression and kinda change the previous owner and what they've done to, to that location. So, sky's the limit and, and we're on our way up and I do appreciate the time, I welcome all of you to come out and visit us, we'll take you on a nice tour. They are about to pour the, the walls tomorrow, so the first walls will be being poured and some of these are gonna be two, three stories out there, so it's gonna be a sight to behold when it's all said and done, but if you guys ever wanna come by, schedule it with Jimmy, Mac, Ron, any, any of them and we can get you out there and show you what we got in the works. As for future projects, I would like to come in in the next month or so and give you guys an update on where we're at and where we're going.
It'll be great and hey, we appreciate y'all too, so...
Of course, of course.
So, and it's pretty impressive and it's going along pretty good and I wanna thank Ron and our staff and Mac and Jimmy and for the hard work that they put in to get you, get you in where you need to be.
They go above and beyond and they don't, they don't expect anything in return, so we really, we really do appreciate them and, and we couldn't be where we're at without them, honestly. We will hit our deadline.
Maybe not Ron and Mike, but...
We will hit our deadline and we will move on to the next phase and if, if it's up to me, the phases will not stop. We've, we're extending contracts, we're keeping people here for a good amount of time, so we, we just wanna make a good impression on the community and be a, a good part of the community and help it thrive. So, if there's any way we can help, reach out to Ron, Jimmy, myself, we're willing to do anything.
And I, I learned while I was out there and talking to the contractor Freedom...
So, if there's any way we can help, reach out to Ron, Jimmy, myself, we're willing to do anything.
And I, I learned while I was out there and talking to the contractor Freedom, that's an ESOP company, that's an employee-owned company.
It is.
That's the contractor, and so, we got into some discussions because I was real curious about how that worked, and I was just going to throw that out there, that they're, they're employee-owned.
Yes, they're a phenomenal company, and since we had ta- had that discussion about the cap, and, um, since they're getting so comfortable there, we have issued three new work orders, and it's just going to keep growing.
Great.
So as long as we get the cooperation and we're seeing the results, it's going to keep moving. But we do appreciate the time, I appreciate you listening to me tonight.
Thank you.
We appreciate you coming.
Any questions for Matthew about the facility or anything else?
I pretty much got the rundown when I was there.
Yep, it's pretty impressive.
Yep.
Um, and, and we are doing the additions and, and different things like that, but like I said, the entire facility is getting upgraded everywhere, and safety is the number one concern there, so.
Y'all are doing a lot of paving out there, too, aren't you?
We're doing a lot of paving, we're about to pave six and a half acres in the back for log storage, to, to move it off so we can build more and keep expanding. So, like I said, I mean, there's no limit to what can be done out there. We have, we have room to grow and we have every intention to.
Awesome.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Appreciate you coming.
Yes, sir.
Welcome anytime.
So, that was our story, uh, and we're sticking to it, so.
Well, it looks like Ron got them to sponsor something, I'm just wondering...
Well, you talked to the wrong person. Matthew made that clear, if you talk to Matthew, he gets you your sponsorship, Chairman. So, but, I just, we kind of wanted to tell the story. I personally want to thank Matthew and his team out there, you know, I'm tied to that plant at the hip, uh, from, from the very first time we went and recruited Clausen, but Ron and, and Mac and, and their staff, the team, uh, not a lot of folks willing to work on Saturday, and, and I believe Mac has been doing inspections on Sundays to keep the project moving, so you don't hold anything up. So, I don't think anybody asked him to do that, and, uh, I just want to really thank him for, for being a part of the team, and, and, and for you guys to have enough foresight to, to, when we, when we came, and it was their fault on the permit fees to cap that, because it was just, it was awkward the way, there was not a good way to calculate that. Uh, return on investment, millions to pennies, so, so thank you for that, and, and being able to think outside the box on future projects, because he's got four, five, or six more, we just can't tell you yet.
Keywords team.
Yeah.
So, thank y'all.
Y'all can get your walkout from us, I can see your new shiny shoes.
Yeah, I seen that when he comes trotting up there.
Any questions for us?
And you want us to renew your contract?
Well, not now, hell, I'm looking somewhere else, huh? I mean, I ain't going through this. No, uh-uh. Kenny's looking for somebody I heard. Y'all good?
Yes, sir, thank you, appreciate you. One other thing, under, this is one of my items, under, I forgot about it until we were sitting here, and I just want to bring up the garbage on the roads. And I don't know what we can do about it, but, man, it looks bad right now. And I know it's winter and everything's dead, and you can just see it a lot more, but, man, I, I'd made a trip from one end of this county to the other the other day, just going somewhere, and I was looking, and I was, I was like, man, there's a pile of trash, and it's everywhere. It's even on the road I live on, so. And I know we've, we've been at this a time or two, but I'd sure like to see some way, either contract or, you know, something to do some of this. I don't know if you've already got some ideas, or...
Well, I know that the Commission talked about that months ago, and I wasn't sure where you left it. I thought you had tried to look for a contract with somebody to go and help us pick up where it's contracted out, but where did, where did, where did...
Well, we were doing a, well, we put it out for bid for mowing and garbage pickup, but it came back about the same price as what it was costing the county to do it, as far as the mowing part of it. So, we never, we went out one time before that for just a garbage pickup, and when it came back, they went to try to contact the company and they were non-existent anymore, whatever, but, and so, that's kind of where it's at, Mr. Scott, that's where we've been with it.
Mr. Chairman, looks like the, looks like the state has come through and done their roads.
They have.
That definitely helped a lot, because just two weeks ago, it was 4129, and it was really bad. But they're in the same boat from the people I talked to, because I had calls on it, um, and they were just getting help, getting contractors to do it.
Well, I mean, I went all the way down 49 and all the way around the bypass, and it's really bad on the bypass around there. I don't know if any of you have seen it, but I've, and to say this, too, I have seen three or four private citizens out with garbage bags picking up garbage, you know, so hats off to them, and we appreciate that as well, but, man, I just, I don't know, we just, I don't know what we do, but we need to do something, or I think we do anyway.
Mr. Chairman.
Christian Perkins.
Hey, what I did today, I seen, uh, Kevin and his crew out, and, uh, I think, uh, Beasley had a crew out picking up, uh, some too. But what I thought just coming to mind was, you know, a lot of these cities and counties has a, uh, road adoption. Uh, like you said earlier about, uh, picking up trash from some of the citizens, I doubt see a lot of them do pickup, and some do, uh, actually mow, uh, side roads as well. Either they have to be something that we can look into, or would that be something feasible that asking if they want to adopt a road?
We did that...
We got some that are already.
Right. We did that years ago, and, and a lot of people who jumped on it initially just, you know, kind of got frustrated, I imagine, because they had their name up there, and then one guy was, you know, goes down the road and makes, messes up after they had already picked up, so. But we can certainly revisit that, and also, if you wish to, us do a, you know, RFP for losing bids on litter pickup, we can certainly can do that, too. Uh, we just need to clarify what roads you want done, I mean, if you did every road on a cycle that had no trash at all, you would never be able to afford that, because all it takes is just that one guy.
Well, I, I would just think just the county roads, because the state roads and highway, and federal highways is under contract with them. I'm just thinking county paved. I mean, that's just my opinion, I don't know...
Me and Mr., me and Mr. Scott have even talked about just a few weeks ago, I don't know how it works through the folks that have to use, uh, community service to work off time, you know, and we talked about that, but I think there's some liability issues there and things like that, so.
But just wanted to bring that up.
Okay.
We'll start working on it. Anything else? Seeing none, moving on to County Attorney.
I don't have anything else, Mr. Chairman.
You're good. Any additional agenda items? Oh, I'm sorry, I thought y'all were just holding up the wall.
Mr. Chairman, just, just had a couple of things to update you on, if you could. I won't take as long as Mr. Norris did. He has four hours to sit around and talk, apparently, over there at the Economic Development Office, I don't know. That's what I heard him say.
That's what he said, hours.
I'll come by, Jimmy. No, sorry. Um, just a quick update, Brantford, you know, our venture down in the south county of the parks is, is off to a great start, and I just wanted to acknowledge the town voted to spend 65 additional $1,000, $65,000 for more park improvements at Hatch Park. So we appreciate that, that's going to go a long way for baseball and softball this year. They have a lot of buy-in, and, uh, and things are going well. We'll have a, a finalized agreement here pretty soon between their attorney and, and the County Attorney as well. Just wanted to mention Little River Springs, springtime's coming up fast, at the budget workshops, you guys had voted to, uh, approve a gatehouse and some employees to start collecting a fee down there, so the Rec Board is, passed a $5, they recommend a $5 per vehicle charge to, to enter into the springs. It's a little bit lower than the state parks are, so I think we'll start there and kind of, kind of see how that goes, if we need to adjust in the future or something, but that'll be our starting point, uh, to get into Little River. And, uh, Swanee Valley, too, just, you talk about partners, Swanee Valley is, uh, working with us and, and waiving some fees to, to run some power out there for the, for the gatehouse, so, um, want to thank them as well. The pool, also during budget workshops, we had $30,000, we requested for pool repairs. At the time, the pool was full of water, we couldn't drain it because they were still swimming, but we took that off, and you said to come back to us if, if we need that, so we drained the pool, we definitely have to do some repairs there, it's probably going to be around the $20,000 range from, from what we can tell, until he gets down in there and actually starts to work, but somewhere in the $20,000 range, so I can bring that back to you as a, as a budget item or an agenda item, um, but just wanted to make you aware of that, that that'll be coming up, we definitely need to address that. We've been fighting the weather, you can't drain it and, and leave it, leave it drained with these freezes we're getting, it's just going to get worse, but. And then just wanted to mention real quick, Douglas Park, if you get a chance to go by Douglas Park, the playground is about done there. Um, we, did I steal your thunder, Mr. Perkins?
Yes, you did.
But, um, yeah, please drive by there and, and check out the playground, um, with Powell and, and another sponsor, Pilgrims, helped fund some of that playground there, a good part of it. Uh, it's pretty impressive when you come around the corner there, so. We're not quite finished, but we're another week out, and we'll be, we'll be a com- complete 100%, so. Just wanted to, uh, to bring you up to speed on those and some items that we'll be bringing here shortly in the future.
Thank you, Jason, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, uh, he needs to stop by and see Matthew, I think he had some...
It's already, it's already in the works, Matthew called me the other day, Ron...
Let me just tell y'all.
That's been cut off.
It's been cut off? Oh, really?
That conversation happened.
Hey, have you ever...
I didn't talk to you, I talked to Matthew. Thank you, thank you.
Have you ever heard of District Five? Just throwing that out there.
Chairman and Commissioners, I just wanted to, uh, bring a little bit of, of good news that we found out at the end of last week. Um, several months ago, Previous Board had approved us to put in an application for a firehouse sub grant for, um, new hydraulic electric, uh, jaws of life, basically, extrication equipment. Found out at the end of last week, we were successful, um, in, in gaining a set of that, it's worth about $38,000. Uh, it was 100% grant, no match by the county, so, um, they have a great program with firehouse subs, uh, every, anytime you go in there, they'll ask you if you want to, um, you know, round up to, to go to their foundation, and, and with the support that people do for first responders in doing that, uh, they, they give out millions of dollars a year, uh, around the country. But we were, we were successful in gaining, uh, a set of the, of the hydraulics, so, um, we're very, very excited about that. So I just wanted to let you guys know that, that, uh, that we got that.
Good deal. Thanks, Chief Hand, appreciate that.
Awesome.
No additional. Public concerns and comments, anybody else wishing to speak? Or did Jimmy wear y'all out already? Seeing nobody? Administrators' comments? Mr. Scott?
Just wanted to share with you a, a few things, um, we've realized we've got some maintenance issues we need to take care of out of landfill, I'll bring, be updating you as we go forward, uh, but, uh, some, some projects we had needed to have happened that we didn't do in the past, uh, be working with, uh, Mr. Locklear and, and others on that. The, um, Shannon contacted, uh, the folks, we had a, had an old number for the Brownwood Preserve, the D E P A folks, he contacted those, uh, last week, and, uh, it looks like we were able to use that site, that's 51 acres, that was a little Superfund site, uh, back in the day. Uh, you are all too young to remember the Brownwood and their operations and the Socratesote, um, back whenever I was a kid, uh, but, um...
Whole, whole yard.
Right.
My granddaddy worked there.
Pardon?
My granddaddy worked there.
Okay, cool. But, uh, anyway, we're going to be able to use that property, we're not sure of all the limitations that will be there yet, Shannon's going to be working through those. There's some other things that Mr. Vat will help us with also, uh, moving forward, but I just wanted to share that, some good news. Uh, Jimmy will be wanting to develop it, you know, whether we put the sheriff there or wherever, figure out that later, but, um, anyway, also, the legislative delegation that, uh, came last week, uh, got a email or a text from, um, Leanne, the lady from daughter, uh, from Representative Shope's office, um, thanking us for our hospitality. Uh, we had some things in the back for them, but, uh, they were really pleased that we treated them right. And, uh, just, you know, hats off to Eric and his team for, and Logan for, set up a Zoom call for them, uh, with the representative being sick, uh, appreciate Parsharak bringing water and, and things, but, um, it's a team effort. Appreciate Shannon and his efforts in getting our, uh, ask list, list together, did a great job with that, but, um, you know, it pays off when we all work together for the common good, so, um, that's all I've got, Mr. Chairman, unless you, if you have any questions for me.
Any questions for Mr. Scott? I guess you're free, free and clear. Mr. Vat, any comments?
Uh, no, sir.
Mr. Perkins?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Jason, uh, doing a great job over there with the park over there at the Dunn Center, uh, it was real good, you know, we had, had a couple of concerns, I told Mr. Scott and Jackson about them, I think we got those worked out, but looking good over there, uh. Also, we had a, uh, good, uh, MLK parade, thanks to the sheriff and thanks to the Fire Chief, Chief Hand, for paying a part in that. Uh, I was in there, I put a float in, and my float came out first place. So I got first fell, uh, float first when I've done that, so, uh, and thank for all the hard work from, uh, Development Authority and, uh, Permit Department and Ron, them doing a great job of getting this done, you know, we was at the, uh, City Hall, and, man, they had, uh, some things going on there, but them to take and put these things prioritized, as Ron said, to be able to get these things done, I think that was really good, uh, you know, putting permits, get things done, and when you got a delay and you got your project sitting there, I don't know how to deal with that, uh, but, you know, as well, when your project get permitted and time is money. And, uh, you know, you got things scheduled, and you're trying to schedule your construction, and you really need to get those things done, and I think they did a great job, I just want to thank them for doing that. Uh, and, and Max to go out there on, uh, Sunday, man, to make permits, to make inspections, you know, that, I know that says a whole lot to them that we're doing, you know, we, we appreciate them. Uh, I've had the opportunity to work out there to, uh, Clausen, to go in, and when they first started Clausen, I mean, uh, yeah, Clausen, I did some work in there, for them, some sheet rock in their break room and other rooms in there, they work in there as well, and, uh, so, and look at, they did a very impressive job, that steel work, tying that steel, it's a lot of work, and, uh, so we're just, just glad to see things are moving on. And if we can be able to help, we'd be glad to help.
Agreed. Good now, Mr. Perkins.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Vat?
Just like, thank everybody for coming out, supporting everything with the county and county business, and thanks for Matt, Bender Holt's coming out, talking with us. Appreciate y'all.
Mr. Land?
Um, yes, sir, I would just ask the, the Board and the community to continue to pray for the Pennington family. They lost a, a very special person to that group. Continue to pray for them, and, and then I just echo what you guys have said, just thank our staff, I mean, from the top to the bottom, we got some really good people that work for this county. Um, you know, they, they, they believe in this county, they love this county, and, and a lot of those folks work for us, and, and we're privileged to have them. Like I say, like, from department heads to the guy driving the truck or the road grader or sweeping the floor, we, we got some really good people, and I'm grateful for them.
Agreed, thank you. Mr. Ralph?
Uh, no, I don't really have anything. I do want to say thank you to Matt and you guys coming out, and, and Jimmy, you and I know where that place was, sitting deserted not too long ago, and didn't know where we were going to end up, or what we were going to end up with, but to see what we have now, I'm just appreciative, I just want to say thank you.
Well, that's the problem with going last, y'all get to say all the good stuff, and you don't leave me with nothing to say, so.
Just leave me anything.
No, I got to say something.